Meeting called to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection.
I'm here for Pearl. Thank you.
We will now slip the plan.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, benevolent, justiciable, and justiciable.
As complied with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner: The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 16, 2025, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. The notices are on file with the city clerk. Moving on to proclamations, I would like to announce mayor and council have issued a proclamation recognizing April 26, 2025 as Arbor Day. And with that, we are moving on to special event applications from Recreation Director Alicia Floyd.
Good evening, mayor and council. This evening, there are six applications before you. All of them are returning events with the exception of the Asbury Park Food Truck and Music Festival, which will be held on October 25 and 26. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia.
Have a good night, Alicia.
We're now on to matters from the City Council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Nothing from me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
Hi, everyone. So I just want to let you know that the Chamber of Commerce Restaurant Tour takes place on Saturday, on Sunday, April 27, from noon to four. And if anybody's interested in tickets, the website is asburyparkchamber.com. And it's 27 restaurants throughout the city. It's always a lot of fun, so I hope you take advantage of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes. On Saturday, April 26, the city is sponsoring an event. There are going to be a number of vendors. It's called Made and Sold in Asbury Park. So these are restaurants, stores, and the entrance fee is zero. So we'd like you to come out. It's from 12 to 4 p.m., and it's at the Berkeley. And then also, we are continuing to have dumpsters out on the streets for free for residents. If you're doing your spring cleaning or decluttering, here's an opportunity. And the next time they'll have the out will be on Saturday, May 3, and it'll be located next to the library. And they'll be there from the hours of 10 a.m. in the morning until 4 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Sadly, Asbury Park experienced a shooting, and I think the entire mayor and council just want to offer our thoughts and prayers to the family of the victim.
Thank you. Mayor Moore.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to matters from the acting city manager.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. And matters from the city attorney.
I have nothing, thank you.
All right. We're now moving on to a presentation by Crossrode Asbury Park LLC for the redevelopment of Block 2703, Lot 3, 701, 705, Second Avenue. First, we're going to have a short overview, though, from planning consultant Beth McManus.
Good evening, folks. My name is Beth McManus, and the planning redevelopment consultant for the city Asbury Park. I'm just going to give a quick introduction and then allow the developer to go through the redevelopment proposal. That's what was presented this evening. So tonight's presentation is about the Holy Spirit Cathedral, a Holy Spirit Church site. This is the church located at 701 to 705, Second Avenue. It's in the corner of Second and Bond. For those of you that have been following the process, we've had a few different presentations over the last perhaps 18 months or so. Tonight's presentation is the developer's review of their current proposal, which has been amended from earlier in the year, or it could be late last year, to respond to some of the community concerns. But at its core, it remains an adaptive reuse of a church and construction of a multifamily residential building on the remaining land. And so with that, and I'm going to hand things over to the developer and have him provide any other all the way through to the presentation.
Yeah, wherever you're comfortable.
Move that mic down to your mouth.
Hello? You guys can hear me now? All right. So my name is Joseph Hara. This is Ozzy Yaseen. We are the developers for the Holy Spirit Church. This presentation is for the adaptive reuse of the former Holy Spirit Church into an innovative live, work, and play development. The last time we were here to present this project, we received two yeses and three no votes. Since then, I've had the opportunity to speak to one of the council members, and together, I feel like we've come up with a revised plan that will address some of the council members' needs, okay? And the first thing we did was we increased the parking supply. So, and just to get to the nitty-gritty of it, it's one parking space for every market rate unit and two parking for every one- and two-bedroom market rate unit, and two spaces for every three-bedroom unit, regardless whether it's market rate or income restricted. The way we were able to get to the increased parking supply was... Can you actually, can you go to the parking? And there's an additional three ADA parking spaces that were added as well. So we took the lobby and the retail space and amenity space from the front of the building. We removed that from the building. The lobby is now situated on the side of the residential building. It's now sandwiched between the church building and the residential building, and it kind of joins the two buildings together. So they're now actually connected. The lobby is adjoining within the church to get into the residential building, so there's actually two entrances for the lobby, one from the church and one from the exterior of the building, which I thought was pretty cool. The gym was now located to the lower level of the church, and the retail space is just gone. We figured we had enough retail space in the church, so... The front facade of the building will still remain glass, so if you notice, there's like a little box in the front, and we'll just display artwork there. And the reason behind that is we still wanted to display the... We still didn't want it to be residential from ground floor all the way up to the top. We wanted it to have some sort of retail look on the bottom, and then residential up top, so it'll just be, it'll just be glass with artwork displayed behind it to give the appearance of a storefront, but it's not. We also took the density down from 90 units to 80 units. Didn't want to do that, but that was the only way that we were able to get to one parking space per unit and two parking spaces for every three-bedroom unit. The next thing we did is we decreased the parking demand. Can we go to the lower level of the building, please? And the way we reduced the parking demand was now the office space on the lower level of the building is now restricted to only the tenants of the building. Not just the residential tenants, but obviously the church tenants as well. So the way we look at it is, it's kind of like co-working, open office space that both the residents of the residential building and the church building can use. If a photographer is upstairs and needs additional studio space, or if there's an artist downstairs that needs additional studio space or additional space to kind of put together their artwork, they'll be able to rent out one of the office spaces. But the office space cannot be rented by anybody just coming in to rent the office space. It's got to be a tenant of the building. Anybody outside of development wouldn't be able to rent in there. So that kind of reduces the parking demand for the office space on the lower level. Those are really the main things. Those are really the main changes. So basically, we decreased the parking demand and increased the parking supply in a few different ways. Anybody have any questions? I'm sure there will be, so...
Yeah, I'll start off. I know you went from 90 to 80 units, and you went from 74 to 83 parking spots.
Yep.
And you say, and if you did the simple math, you're right. It's more than one per unit. But when you dedicated two to 16...
Three-bedroom units.
Three bedrooms, that's 32, leaving 51 for more than, even 51 spaces for more than the rest of the units.
Yeah.
So there's not a... If my math's right, 13 units, either being one bedroom, two bedrooms, are going to have no parking spots.
No. What do you mean?
No, so the one-bedroom gets 20 units. The three-bedrooms gets 16 parking, but the 16 parking is stacked, so it's two parkings for three bedrooms.
Okay, so then is the right number 99, not 83?
16 parking, so 51 single.
I've got, yeah?
That is correct. 90 will be 99, correct.
Okay. So the reports say 83.
Yeah, it's 83 parking spots, let me see. What's that? Well, keep in mind, these are only for the market rate units. So right now, we have 64 market rate units.
You're right.
Right? So, and I know the way the architect did this was kind of confusing.
No, you're right, Joe. I mean, yeah, 64, I think that's right. You're right, 64 parking for market units.
Yeah.
And 16, to come up to 80 parking, will be the stack for the three bedrooms.
Yeah, yeah. So it's 60, so you have 64 market rate units, and in total, single spots, you have 16 and 51. So you have 67 and 3. So you, hold on, 67 and 3, yeah. So you have 70 parking spaces and 64 market rate units. 83 total spots, but the three bedrooms get the two parking spots by the lift. So on a ground-level parking space, it's actually only one parking space, but every three-bedroom gets a lift.
So we have, now we have 21 bedrooms, 20-1 bedroom units, 44 two-bedroom units, and 16 three-bedroom units.
Yeah, that's total.
That's correct.
So the 16 get 32 spaces each, that's 32.
Not necessarily, not all 16, because there's income restricted in the three bedrooms. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I take that back. The three-bedroom income restricted still get two parking, you're right, sorry.
So that's 32.
Yeah.
So 32 from 83 is 51, but you got 21 bedrooms and 44 two-bedrooms, so that's 64 units.
Yeah.
And 51 parking spots.
Now, you have 67 parking spots. You have 51 single spots, 16 stackers, which comes up to 32 parking spots. So the total that you have is 67 parking spots plus three ADA parking spots.
Let's start again.
Okay.
How many total parking spots in the parking garage, including stackers?
83.
Okay. So we've got 83.
Mm-hmm.
We take away 32.
Take away 16.
We take away 32, two for the 16 three-bedrooms.
That's correct.
Okay, we're correct so far. 83 minus 32 is 51.
Correct.
But you have 64 units to use 51 parking spots.
No, because your 64 units are included in your three-bedroom. You took away the three bedrooms.
No, you got 21 20 slash one-bedroom units and 44... You decrease the number of one-unit bedrooms and increase the number of two, which I have no problem. But there's 21 unit bedrooms and 44 two-unit bedrooms.
I think the easiest way to look at this...
That's 64, that's 64 units.
Yeah.
And 51 parking spots.
So I think the easiest way to look at this, you say it says total 67 parking spaces? That's 67 parking spaces on ground level. You have 83 parking spaces total with the lifts.
Eight, okay. We'll start again. And correct.
Okay.
The building now has, it went from 74, which I appreciate, to 83 parking spots.
72, yeah, okay.
So now we have 83 parking spots. You have 16 three-unit, three-bedroom units.
Correct.
And they're getting two each, that's 32. So 83 minus 32 is 51. But as far as apartments, one bedrooms, you have 20, and two bedrooms, you have 44, so that's 64 units with 51 parking spots.
Yeah, but... You got to take away the income restricted.
They come restricted because they don't get parking.
They don't get parking, right. So it's only for market rate units that have one space per unit.
And how many income restricted are there?
20%.
How many units?
16. Good question.
16.
Is this 16 units? 16 units.
For any of our developments outside?
Fine. That wasn't in, if that was in there, I probably wouldn't be asking these questions. I understand that.
Does it not say for income-restricted units only?
Excuse me?
Does our presentation not say for market rate units only for the parking?
Did it?
It should.
I'm not sure. If it did, I apologize. So, so the 13 units that won't get parking...
16, oh, yeah, right, 13.
13 units that won't get parking are the affordable...
Yeah, yeah. Correct, correct. Except the three bedrooms. The three bedrooms still get two spaces per unit.
Correct, okay. Thank you.
It will be 51 minus 16, 35 parking.
Okay. I mean, I found it, the easiest way I found to look at it is the total number of 67 spaces. We have 64 units. So if it's a three-bedroom, it still has one ground-level space, except it utilizes a lift to be able to get to two spaces. So the easiest way to look at it is one space per unit. There's 64 units, we have 67 parking spaces. The reason that there's three over the 64 is because there's three ADA spaces that we didn't allocate to units, which, okay. Apparently, some developers do, which I can... This whole shit's confusing. Yeah, well, no. By 67?
Because 32 doubled for the three bedrooms, and the 35 is marketing units plus 16 marketing units.
Okay. I'm just saying, the easiest way to look at it.
We're good, understand? Okay.
Sorry that was confusing.
No problem.
I think we could have made that easier.
On the first floor of the church.
Yeah.
You have a stage, and even in some of your pictures, you have a band playing on the stage.
Yeah, yep.
Will you make the commitment there will be no ticketed concerts in this? Because you could have a concert in there, probably, the church is so big, you would probably fit 500 people in there.
Yeah, we don't have that many seats.
Will you get some type of commitment that there will be no ticketed events?
Um, I don't know if I can make that commitment, because I don't know exactly what tenant we're going to have in there that's going to take over the cafe space and stage, and I really don't want to limit the tenants. I don't think it's going to be easy for us to find the correct tenants for this building. I don't want to limit what they can and can't do this early in the game.
Okay, just a question again. You've come down a lot in density, you've increased parking. I still don't think there's enough parking. That's the only reason I'm asking, just so...
I will tell you that we will have valet for events.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Where will they be parked? No, okay, you said you haven't figured that out yet. Other people have said the same thing.
You could, with managed parking, you could fit over 120 spaces on that property. With managed parking. They could be stacked behind the church building, in front of the church building, and they could also be stacked in the parking deck. Again, it has to be managed. There has to be a valet crew there to take the cars in and out.
Okay, then, as much as... It's not going to be decided tonight, the financials.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
Okay, the piece of paper I got from you guys through Beth and everything said the financials would stay the same, which I find, if you're deleting 10 units, I don't see how we get the same type of money.
Finances doesn't stay the same. It goes down by $35,000. So...
I'm sorry, what we got said it stays the same. I believe. Says it stays around $330,000.
Can I see that, please? Could you pull that up? That's wrong. There's another paper I have over here that should have been...
Right, that's what we got. Stays at $330,000 a year. I just can't see if you deleted 10 units.
This is the paper that's supposed to be there. It's wrong.
Okay, so what's, what's the right now?
$295,000.
Okay, how'd you come up with that?
Well...
And that, again, you say, like, we did it, because I know you had to redo all your financials to make sure this is viable.
It wasn't really that hard of a calculation to do. The city, the city collects 10% of the annual gross revenue. The annual gross revenue for every single unit is approximately $35,514 a year. They're like $3,000, $3,500 a month. So that $35,000 a year, it just, that times 10, times 10%, so that's $35,000. So $35,000 minus 333 is, I don't know, 295 or whatever the other...
Right, okay. That's all the questions, though.
Yeah. I mean, is that exact? No, I didn't have the time to really work on it.
That's something that would be worked out down the road with, when you give the pro forma to our professionals or anything. I just had to question, how could it stay at 330?
It would not, it would go down.
Okay, so that number was wrong.
Our income goes down.
I'm going to just, again, and Beth, maybe you could correct anything that I say that is wrong, that this vote, if there is a vote tonight, would be to move this to the planning board, to declare this as an area that needs redevelopment of some sort. This wouldn't be a vote tonight on the pilot or even the project itself, although it is certainly a blessing and a sign to you all that certainly three people are supportive in theory of this project. But the only thing we are voting on tonight is to send this to the planning board.
That's correct. There's a resolution later in your agenda. It's 2025 to 29, and it would do just that, with all parts of the planning board to study whether the site qualified as an area needing redevelopment. It's not a guarantee, but it's a symbolic vote for the council about your support or lack thereof for the project.
So if this came back to us with a pilot that we thought was not appropriate, there would be an opportunity to vote no?
Yes, there are opportunities to vote no or yes at the designation of the redevelopment area, which ultimately is decided by the council, on the redevelopment plan itself and on the pilot.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have a question. In regards to the affordable units, the, is it going to be low, very low, moderate, or is it workforce?
That's a good question. So we gave two options to the council. We, you guys, I don't think made a decision on it, but I knew that question was going to come up, so I brought it with me. So scenario one is six affordable units, one very low one-bedroom, one low-income two-bedroom, one low-income three-bedroom, two moderate income two-bedroom units, one moderate income three-bedroom units, and 12 workforce income units. Scenario two is one moderate income one-bedroom, six moderate income two-bedrooms, two moderate income three-bedrooms, and nine middle-income units, workforce units essentially, workforce housing units.
Beth, could you just explain what a workforce unit is? Sure. It's what I would say is part of income-restricted housing as opposed to affordable housing. Affordable housing here in New Jersey is defined as 80% or less than median income. Workforce housing, or referred to as middle-income housing in the city, in some ordinances and policy documents, is for income restrictions between that 80% to the top of affordable housing and up to 120% of median income.
Can you just, would it be fair to say that income restricted would likely be people like teachers, firemen, police officers? Not people necessarily on disability?
Yes, I think that's accurate.
And is restricted for how many years?
30 years.
40 years.
40?
Sorry, 40 years. I thought it went with the same thing as the tax payment, I mean, the pilot.
Affordable housing rules have recently been changed, requiring new rental units to be 30 years rather than 30 years. So as projects come forward in the future, this would qualify as one of those, because we don't have redevelopment planning.
Thank you, Beth.
Workforce units are considered low income?
The workforce housing units do not qualify for affordable housing credit against the city's portal housing obligation, but they do provide a different, they do provide a important and different level of affordability for folks that might otherwise not be able to afford to live in the, in the city or in that project.
No other questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you. There's going to be no other questions, but we're going to go to the public. I'm sure there will probably be questions, so if you guys want to stay there, whatever you want to do.
Sure.
We're now on to public participation. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move to open.
All in favor? Public participation portion of the meeting is now open. Any member who, of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
And just so everybody knows, this is not just about this project, it's about anything and everything in the city, so if you have anything you want to get up to speak about anything or everything, now's the time to do it. It's not just this redevelopment project. Thank you.
Is this working? Okay. Hi, good evening. My name is Kathy McQueen, and I live at 4 Wesley Court here in town. I have lived here for the past 18 years with my husband Doug, and we moved here because of the walkability, vibrancy, and diversity of town. Culturally, nowhere beats here, and it offers so much more than any other town on the shore. For over a decade, I was a parishioner and regular attendee of Holy Spirit Church. We would walk or ride our bikes over for Mass and enjoy the company of our neighbors of all backgrounds, young, old, Latino, Haitian, et cetera, all in the confines of that beautiful historic structure. And if you haven't been inside, it is truly magnificent. It's important to note that we did not drive, and we did not take up any parking spaces when we attended Mass. Our church congregation is now dispersed amongst other parishes, but there's two possibilities for what comes in its place. One offers the variety and diversity that appealed to us in the first place while we moved here, and it preserves a historic structure while contributing to the economic vibrancy of the community. It also provides much-needed affordable housing and community space. As an example, in addition to what Amy had mentioned about teachers, et cetera, when we increase restaurants and other small businesses in town, where do we expect people to live? They shouldn't have to live outside of Asbury Park if they're working here. The other possibility is the Six McMansions, forgive me, which may sit empty half of the year. That possibility offers the monolithic sameness of any wealthy suburb, which is what we tried to avoid when we moved here. I urge the council to move forward with the plan that will preserve Holy Spirit building and provide much-needed housing in a vibrant, walkable neighborhood. Please prevent the loss of another unique and beautiful historic structure in Asbury Park. Thank you.
Thank you. When do, when do you pick up your puppy?
Oh, hi, sorry.
Doug told me about your new puppy, so my wife works there, so she showed me a picture of its brother or something, so when do you pick up your new puppy?
Oh, my gosh. Later in May.
Okay, congratulations. Okay, congratulations. Thank you.
Yes, and then her brother lives in town, so.
Thanks, Kathy. That was pretty much everything.
Sorry I cried, but she looked so beautiful.
Thank you, Kathy. That was, that was pretty much covered all of it. I was not a parishioner at the church on Poly Shilga, Fifth Avenue. And yes, Asbury Park is a real dog-friendly town, a very walkable, dog-friendly town. Everybody seems to have a dog except us, but that's on the list coming up soon. Yeah, Asbury Park really is a walkable city. All of it is and should be as safe as possible. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and Asbury Park Complete Streets Coalition. Many of you may not know, or maybe you do know, about the designation of a transit village. Asbury Park's transit center and the surrounding area was designated by NJDOT as a transit village, meaning that residences and retail spaces and other things are built and created around the transit center, and then enabling people to get on the train and go to work or live in affordable housing and reasonable-rate housing, and walk across better light. This is NJDOT and NJ Transit, walk across the train tracks, walk across Memorial, back and forth, better lighting, better crossing, and then bridging two sides of the city, bringing the city together in a healthy way. And then, by the same token, the development of this property, saving, preserving the church building itself, which I hate, I think many of us would hate to see any historic, any more historic structures destroyed in the city, repurposing it, weather-ticketed events, whether or not, with coworking space, with a theater, with a cafe, making it be a vibrant part of the city, inviting people from both sides of the city to participate, to enjoy functions or utilizing space for artists. And then the residential building with 80, whatever number of buildings are in this, and however many parking spaces are in this building, it will provide an incredible economic benefit to the businesses on Main Street, bringing people walking, probably walking up and down Main Street, walking and rolling, and using and partaking in the restaurants and purchasing things in these businesses. So there doesn't seem to be much of a downside, except for potentially lack of parking, which seems to be a real shame, since most of the houses on that street, and please don't crucify me if I'm wrong, have driveways. And so if we have an influx of people utilizing that space, as, I think there were six masses on that, in that church, is that right, Kathy? On Sundays, every weekend, there were six, on Saturdays and Sundays, six masses, bringing dozens and dozens of cars every single weekend. It's hard to, it's hard to comprehend why there would ever even be a question that this church would be demolished and, and more, more residences. We desperately need more housing in the city. And yeah, parking's a problem, I know, but we need more places to live, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Colin Chapman, 1408 Park Avenue. You know, I'm not here to, you know, degrade some of the, you know, the history of the church or any of that, but I do share the concerns of the mayor with the parking. I think we're downplaying the impact. I live in a house that does not have a driveway, and it's a nightmare, even with a parking permit. It's a nightmare to find a parking spot during peak months, have to park several blocks away from the house, have groceries, you know, and I'm a resident of the town, so I just, I just, I don't, I don't see how these numbers add up. I mean, one, one-bedroom unit, one car, and then I, you know, I think most people, maybe you're gonna have two people living, I just don't see how the math adds up. I think it's gonna be a problem with the parking. The town is growing, the parking is finite, we're gonna, we're gonna see, we're gonna see issues unless something is further addressed. Although I do appreciate the changes, I think we need to go a lot farther to support the parking. My second point has to do with pilot in general. I own a 125-year-old house in town, and I am just flabbergasted. I have some statistics that I pulled off NJ.gov. The value of, and this is average residential sales price, Asbury Park 2015, $275,000. The average house in New Jersey during that same time, and again, you can go to NJ.gov and look at these statistics yourself if you don't want to take my word for it, $397,279. So Asbury Park, the average residential sale price in 2015 was 45% lower than the average in New Jersey. Fast-forwarding to 2024, the average residential sales price of a house in Asbury Park is The average price in New Jersey, more broadly speaking, was $573,997. And now the average price in Asbury has flipped from 45% lower in 2015 in the average New Jersey house to 22% higher in 2024. The way, again, I'm not an expert at the pilot program, but the way I understand the pilot program is that it offers tax relief to developers to come in and build, and build buildings. And these people that are, that will be living in these units will not have to pay the school tax that I have to absorb as a burden for myself. My taxes, I'm just gonna throw out some numbers on my taxes. I moved here in 2021. My taxes went up $4,423, or 37% in four years. I would love to know what the tax increase for these units that are supported by the pilot program, how much they went up. That's an average of over 9% per year. In 10 years, my taxes will double if I, if we keep at this certain...
Okay, I'm gonna have to, you can finish your sentence.
Okay. My point, I think I've made my point. Thank you.
Okay, and the numbers, the numbers you're asking for, we can't, I can't give you to right now.
I understand.
But you can call the tax assessor tomorrow and hope, glad they help you with the numbers. Michael DelRee, he's fantastic.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Michael Kushner, 1105th Avenue. First, I want to say I understand that parking is definitely an emotional topic. I don't live on Second Avenue. I think if this church goes down and we build those six large units, we're still gonna have a parking issue. We're always gonna have a parking issue. The town is a mile and a quarter square. Density is always gonna be an issue. We're dealing, I live over on Fifth Avenue on the west side with Poly, and we're dealing with the same thing at 1201 Memorial, where there's gonna be new units coming up and so forth. The irony is that the fact that we're only, and it's a NIMBY thing, not in my backyard, I don't live on Second Avenue, I understand, but we only have, we have a really small backyard. That's this city. Wherever we build, this is gonna be an issue. So I think that we need to really kind of have some vision here and think 10, 15, 20 years from now, when we're looking at Asbury Park and we see what is built, are these decisions of what the city looks like gonna be based on parking? The irony is because it's a mile and a quarter square, to the late, to the, to the woman that just spoke about when she went to that church, is that it is a walkable and a mobile city, and there are all alternatives, and even people coming from out of town have figured that out. So I think we really need to look at this with some vision. We also have a real housing issue in this city. We need housing. The other thing with the pilot program, and I'm not a fan of pilot programs, I'm not a developer, but I understand that they are a reality of the way business is done. And there's a lot of information going out, misinformation, I think, different numbers, but we did some research, and I will tell you this, there's three scenarios here, that the church goes down and you build these six McMansions people are referring them to. The other is that we go with the developer's plan, and I think there's a pilot program where a large amount of money goes to the city, nothing, some to the county, nothing to schools. There's another scenario where the pilot program is about $330,000 a year. A percentage goes to the city, a percentage does go to the schools, less to the county. In either scenario of the develop, of the preservation, it far exceeds the revenue to the city from billions, six large homes, not even close. And especially when you add in, to Polly's point, the economic impact of having this population there, now going to restaurants, businesses, and so forth, it doesn't even come close. So from a revenue standpoint, preserving this property and building these units is a boon for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel like I'm at the Oscars. About three minutes. I'm gonna make a total left turn on this. I like the plan, by the way, so thank you and the changes to it.
Name and address, please.
Sure. Jean-Meslinov, 1017 Third Avenue. So I want to talk about a deployment of the fire department to 1,003rd Avenue, to the unit, as deputy mayor probably has witnessed it on numerous occasions. So I did a few calculations, and I might add, I do have experience with this. I've been commissioner of the fire department and police department, and I have, these numbers are from FEMA. So at 1,003rd Avenue, there is, we'd say on average, and I have a neighbor here to witness, probably two deployments a day to, to that facility. There has never been a fire in five years since I've been there in that deployment. So running some numbers, and, so there's typically an engine truck, a ladder truck, a command truck, and an ambulance that's deployed. In total, and I have a breakdown, and I'll hand it to you all after this. So each deployment is $1,385 approximately. Now, if we add staffing into that, three firefighters per vehicle, the officer that, the chief maybe that comes out, and two EMTs that come out, for the three firefighters per vehicle, that's $534 per vehicle. For the officer to be deployed, it's 103. For the two EMTs, it's 155. So the total per deployment is $2,177. So the average daily deployment for two, for two day, for two deployments is $4,354. If you total that per year, that's $1.6 million of deployment. This has been going on for five years. So even if we cut that in half, that comes out to $800,000 a year. And I know I've spoken to a couple of council members on it. What are we doing? It's, and it's not just the housing authority. I know the housing authority will say, it's because somebody's smoking in the union. But from a safety issue, from a tax issue, because we all pay the taxes for that deployment. Additionally, what numbers I have have put in here, because I have negotiated with fire, fire unions, is they will negotiate based on the amount of deployments. So that's 600 deployments that will be put in the books as part of their negotiation, not only for salary, but that's also for benefits. So, again, I've only been here for five years, I have experience with it, and nothing's been done. So I would hope that this gets a little bit more attention, that not only as an annoyance to the neighbors, but also a safety issue, not only for the firefighters, but those that live in the building. We may at some point want to ask the housing authority, is if you want to perhaps stop the behavior, have them evacuate the building for every alarm, because they're not. Everybody just sits around. Fire department comes out, checks it, and that. At the very least, what we may want to consider, it would be cheaper to deploy a full-time firefighter in that building at $95,000 a year and say, no, everything's okay, you don't have to come out. I'll do it. I live across the street. I'll take the salary for it.
Okay, and I appreciate it. You're, you're correct, and we have to look into it. And if you want to give us the numbers, fine, I'm sure we can get them ourselves.
Yeah, they're being the numbers, I'm sure you have them, so.
Okay, thank you. And something has to be done, and I've asked in past years, because we have like, you know, orders, if I have an alarm system and I have so many false alarms, I get charged. Right. I have asked, do the schools get charged and do the housing authorities get charged? And the answer's been no. So maybe that's something, but I mean, I have a representative from the housing authority here tonight, maybe she can take this back to the administration also, let them know this is a problem. Thank you. And you're right, it'd be a lot cheaper just to, one full-time fireman just there on a 24-hour shift, which doesn't make sense, but thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Hi, Robert Kahn, 603rd Avenue. I just want to go back to the Holy Spirit redevelopment. I'm a proponent of saving the church, proponent of, I mean, the developer has brought up some, he's got a good plan, but there is a concern with parking, number one. I don't know what the right number is, but one unit, one parking space per unit is substantially under what, what will be required by the tenants. Second thing I want to talk about is the taxes and the revenues. I've heard a few people mention there's gonna be a lot more revenues under this proposal. There's also gonna be a lot more expenses under this proposal. There's a reason why we collect tax revenues, and it's because of expenses. And there's gonna be more kids in schools, there's gonna be more services that are gonna be required to have 80 units versus six McMansions. I'm not a proponent of the McMansions, but let's, let's equal things out. It's not all free money, because there are services and there are expenses that are gonna be associated with that, and we just need to be honest about that. We can't just say it's all about the revenues, so that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Bob Stevens, 704 Second Avenue. I'm one of the stepchildren directly across from this proposed development. I mean, it's a great idea, especially those that do not live in that area. You can take advantage of many of the amenities, including re-converting the church into business, entertainment, whatever your plans are, that directly affects especially those that are opposite side of the street. Approximately 30 people live in the same area where you're planning to build, and already there are many people that don't have driveways. They're using the streets. Already, the streets are difficult to park on. It's not something new, and it will not change. If you've got 150 units, I'm not saying that's the number, but I'm just saying, if you've got 150 units, everybody has a spot minimally. People have two, three, four cars, it varies. Where are all, where are all their guests going to park? There's nothing available for that, so here they are on the street. If you've got the church converted into retail or entertainment or, we already experienced a nightclub on the corner at all hours of the night with their bass bashing through the walls. We're the stepchildren. We're right on the front line. No, I don't know however many else individuals here today have to experience that. They can come visit, take advantage of the wonderful creation, and then go home. We're there. We experience this on a daily and weekly basis. I'm just telling you, the experience of those that live on, on the opposite side of the street currently, and what we experience, and what will, we will experience, once it's built, it's built. That's it. You're gonna have traffic issues? Yes, we've all discussed that. Are people not gonna have visitors? If you, whatever the number is, that's their option. They can have as many visitors as they wish to. Now you have a church building, and as I have stated, it's not a church. It's nice to see the structure, it's an older structure, it's converted into modern, modern business, modern entertainment, modern retail, whatever the plan is, you're still gonna have a parking issue, and it's gonna happen, aside from the fact that we're now gonna be facing a six-story building. Does anyone else have to experience that? You have to consider that. We're the stepchildren, and we gotta speak, because it's already a difficult situation. I would just as soon have the homes built across the street, at least each would have their own driveway. It'll be minimal. We're gonna experience it, and once it's built, that's it. Now where do we go? Six more houses, next block over are sold, another development.
Robert?
And we're right on the border of business and R1.
Robert, I'm gonna have to cut you off.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Robert, I know you've showed up to a few of the meetings and concerned about...
Do you really want to do this? I don't want to do this. There's gonna be no cross-conversations, please. Right. You can talk to him after. You can talk to him after.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Irene Bernie, 615 Sunset Avenue. I met my husband down here, and we bought our house in 1993. And just like the gentleman said, in 1993, my taxes were higher than my mortgage. And going forward now, of course, I paid off my mortgage and widowed, but now the taxes have gone up so high, I probably have to take out an equity loan to keep it up, but that's, I just don't understand how taking down the gorgeous church that we got married in, et cetera, et cetera, is going to help anymore in the city. With the taxes also, at least, why don't we get a sticker for anybody who still lives here, so that they can park free? Why do we have to pay to park at the beach? And things like that, it's just just little things to make it up for the residents that stood here when nobody wanted Asbury Park. We've been paying and paying and paying, and now it's doing beautifully, but what about the people who are here? You want them to stay, don't you? And I, it's starting to look like Manhattan, I hate to say it. I mean, I'm a New Yorker that never left, but it just, it's starting to look like Manhattan with all this, I don't know, but please save the church as best as best as you can.
Thank you.
Good evening, Thomas DeSano, 3600 Route 66 in Neptune. We were here four weeks ago, and this failed by 3 to 2 vote. The only reason why a developer would want to come back so fast is he certainly got an assurance from one of those no votes that they're going to vote yes tonight. And what everybody in this room has the right to know was what was said to that council person who's going to flip their vote, that made them flip their vote. What did the developer say to them? What did anybody else say to them? What did the publisher of a local paper, who claims all the time that he's intervened and is 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 running this show, kind of so to speak, it's called the Madison Marquette Gazette, he calls it Tri-City News, but trust me on that. What did everybody say to the council that makes this person flip their vote? Let's look at what you're flipping your vote from and to, and let's use the old-fashioned scales. On the one side of the scale, you've got, first of all, the pilot, which takes money from the schools and gives it to the developer. That's an acute problem right now, because Asbury Park is facing a $13 million budget deficit in the schools next year. You are looking at possibly losing some of your teachers, a lot of your teachers, you're going to lose sports, you're probably going to lose your football team, you may even lose one of your buildings. This is an acute problem. Why you would do a pilot that takes money from the schools with that extent of problem is beyond me. Also on that side of the scale, the rest of the taxpayers, when you tell a developer you don't have to pay this much for the schools, you transfer that obligation to the rest of the taxpayers if they want to save those schools. So it hurts everybody. Then you've got a big one, the quality of life of the neighborhood, like Mr. Stevens was talking about. You're like 70 parking spaces short, no matter how you cut this. That's going to be 70 cars looking to park on Second Main, that's not counting, Amazon, DoorDash, pizza deliveries, the quality of life there is going to sink. What's on the other side of the scale that's outweighing that? Don't tell me historic preservation, that ship sailed. The beauty of this church was the inside, they already ripped out the Italian marble altar, it's gone, they're going to rip up more of it, okay? Don't tell me the outside is worth preserving, preservationists are laughing in their through their teeth at you, because that limestone isn't what was beautiful, it was beautiful stone. That ship has sailed. So so you have to look at the scale and say to yourself, with all that on one side, and just the developer's limestone on the other side, does it really outweigh it? Are you really going to give your immature approval to the planning board and say, we're okay with this? You shouldn't do that. You should not send it to them, even other guys that you're going to do a pilot, because that's horrible for this town. I wish you would have saved the church, I wish you had a preservation ordinance for this, but that ship sailed. So consider that side of the scale, all the harm you're going to do to the city, and think of those kids that you're going to be screwing over tonight when you flip that vote from a no to a yes.
Okay, I'm going to have to, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard about anything? Or motion to close?
Thank you for all that disinformation.
Second.
Appreciate that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation is now closed.
Thank you, Les.
You guys are good, thank you.
First of all, I just want to.
No, 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 sir.
Why can't I just thank everybody?
No, no. Thank you. If you want to go back to where you're sitting, because there's no more questions for you. Thank you.
We don't get that chance to reply?
No.
No.
This, this isn't Judge Judy.
We're now on to the minutes. I have the executive meeting and regular meeting minutes for the April 9, 2025 meeting. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Councilmember Bez Anderson? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to the consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular items, then said items shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have Resolutions 2025-186 through 2025-193. Do you have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now moving on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution 2025-194, Resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-195, Resolution approving a person-to-person liquor license transfer of Plenary Retail License Number 1303-33-042-006 from Raspberry Moon Inc. to KB and AD Holdings LLC.
Move it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-196, Resolution authorizing LP-28 for a loan application from the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Financing Program for the City of Asbury Park Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements, sponsor name City of Asbury Park, loan number S340883-09.
Move it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-197, Resolution authorizing payment for emergency sewer repairs needed.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-198, Resolution authorizing purchase of wristbands for the Beach Department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2025-199, Resolution authorizing the purchase of a transmission for the Beach Kubota.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2025-200, Resolution authorizing the purchase of three mini beach dumpsters for the Department of Public Works.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-201, Resolution authorizing parts and repairs needed to the Beach Backhoe Loader.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-202, Resolution authorizing a fertilizer and weed control program at various locations citywide with controlled growth for 2025.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-203, Resolution authorizing agreement 2025 fire department apparatus and equipment testing.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-204, Resolution authorizing an annual HVAC preventative maintenance agreement with air system maintenance.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-205, Resolution authorizing the annual renewal of Gallagher software for for city for security system citywide.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-206, Resolution authorizing the annual renewal of SDL software.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-207, Resolution authorizing the release of the performance bond for 614 Cookman Avenue, Block 204, Lot 6, and the posting of a maintenance guarantee.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-28, Resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Asbury Park to enter into a third amendment of the subsequent developer agreement with Asbury Partners LLC as master developer, Somerset Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC as subsequent developer in connection with the redevelopment of that of that certain real property located at Block 4105, Lot 1.01, 1209 Ocean Avenue, 105th Avenue, and 115 Fourth Avenue in the City of Asbury Park, formerly Block 4105, Lots 1, 2, and a portion of 3. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-209, Resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, New Jersey, authorizing the planning board for the City of Asbury Park to investigate whether an area within the city should be designated as an area in need of redevelopment regarding Block 2703, Lot 3, 701, 705, Second Avenue.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
So I want to say this first before I give you my vote. First of all, to JDL, I wanted to thank you for making the changes, and there is some improvement. And I feel as though I'm between a rock and a hard place, because I have to be concerned about the quality of life for those who live in that area. I am also concerned about those who love the church, Holy Spirit, was moved by the woman, she's not here, but she was moved to tears because of the memories that she had and experienced there. You have your three votes. I still have issues regarding the parking, and and I do appreciate the efforts that you have made. And I also have to say that I appreciate the calls that I received from many of you and your emails. But I'm going to stick with what I believe is in the best interest of those who live in that area, the quality of life, the parking is still an issue for me, and I have to say no.
Councilmember Chapman?
Thank you.
Yes, I agree to move it to the planning board.
Councilmember Clayton?
I am also changing my vote from my previous vote, because I had an opportunity to sit down with the developer, express my concerns, and they were kind enough to make, listen to me and make changes, and make changes, I think, make this a better development than it was in the past. Is it perfect? No, it's not. It's still dense, it's still going to create some parking problems, but we saved the church. We've made it better than it was, and for those reasons, and not because anything was offered to me or given to me, but because my conscience says that I can vote yes, so I am voting yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
So I'm not changing my vote, I'm still a yes, but I do want to say one thing, that I supported the project at 90 units with less parking and a lot more hustle and bustle in the church, the commercial, and I can honestly say, you know, that was wrong. What, where Yvonne got it to, which was more parking, decreased density, less hustle and bustle in the church, is a better project. So I'm happy to vote yes again, and I'm happy that, you know, a member of this council took the time to sit down, and I'm happy that you took the time to sit down and make what are changes to the church, and in my opinion, made it a better project.
I want you to vote.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Mayor Moore.[1604.25]